Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Germantownship Board of Trustees to order. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Heaton, could we have the roll call?
Dr. Cross, here.
Mr. Sub, here.
Mr. Potter, here.
All are present.
I'd like to state for the record that Road Superintendent Jeremy Holbrook is present, Police Chief Joey Anzig, Pistol Officer Mark Heaton, and Zoning Inspector Haley Sewell, also present. Do we have any visitor comments? And again, I want to remind people, we talked about this last week, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to speak up during the meeting, and those are online, can unmute, and just, the only thing I ask is that you be recognized by the chair, so we don't have too much of a problem. So anybody, visitor comments? Okay, hearing none, we shall move on to the Pistol Officers' report.
Okay, good evening, everyone, again. I have given you three sets of minutes to review before the meeting. We have the minutes from the December thirtieth special meeting, that was the Budget Review meeting for two thousand and twenty-two, the January fourth organizational meeting, and the January tenth regular meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
One minor one, this was iPhone.
Okay, if you don't want to, that's fine. If there were no corrections, could I have a motion to approve all three sets of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve three sets of minutes, the twelve-thirty-twenty-one special meeting, the one-four-twenty-two organizational meeting, and the one-ten-two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I've also sent you in advance the January financial reports, you have the January thirty-first fund status report, the cash summary by fund for the month of January, which also equals the year-to-date, the January receipts, and the January payments. And there's just two items I want to point out to you. One is that I did make the transfer of four thousand dollars from the general fund, which is number one thousand, to the Road and Bridge Fund, number twenty-three-one, which you approved at the January meeting. And the second item is voucher number six for fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents, two runway ways, which are the first quarter, two thousand and twenty-two trash billing. Are there any questions about the financials? If not, could I have a motion to approve the financial reports and authorize the payment of January bills, which are warrants five-zero-five-four-seven through five-zero-five-five-six, and vouchers number one through one-hundred-and-ten, and that's for payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the January financial reports and authorize the payment of January bills, warrants five-zero-five-four-seven through five-zero-five-five-six, and vouchers one through one-ten for payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
I'll second it.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. On January the nineteenth, I went up to the Board of Elections and filed the required paperwork for both the jet issue as well as the senior citizens levy to be on the May third ballot. They both have been accepted. There was a little hiccup with the Jackson Township filing for the jet issue. Initially, they were not picking up the New Lebanon area, but now that has been corrected, and both Townships, everyone who votes for an elected official in the incorporated or unincorporated areas will be voting on the jet issue on May third, so that's, I think, all square at this point. We've talked the last few months about the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, money that we are going to be, some, we've received half, we'll receive the other half later this year. The total receipts we will receive is three hundred and three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. And as you recall, a recent change that came about through the final rule that was issued by the U.S. Department of Treasury allows the Township to elect to use a standard allowance, say, calling that full amount revenue loss, and that would allow us more flexible use of the money. It is, that category of revenue loss is indeed the most flexible of all the four categories that are allowed for ARPA money, because the revenue loss categories, I'm sorry, the revenue loss category allows the grant funds to be used for any government service. So I would recommend that we just allocate the entire ARPA money to revenue loss. I do have a draft resolution for that purpose that's been given to me by the Ohio Township Association, and if this is something you want to do, I will prepare that resolution for next month.
Yeah, I think we...
Yeah, yeah, yeah? Okay, I will get that resolution, draft it up, and send it to you in advance, and we can do that resolution in March. Now, the ARPA money is federal money, and this is something that we probably haven't experienced too many times over the years, certainly not since I've been here. Since it is federal money, we now have to follow the federal procurement rules. We will not use the Ohio procurement rules. Also, we are required to adopt written policies and procedures regarding federal program compliance requirements. I have not yet found a template for that. I will do some research, maybe reach out to either the Ohio Budget and Management Office, or maybe the OTA, and see if anyone has a template for those policies, and if so, we can probably piggyback on that. If not, we're going to have to start at ground zero, but it is something that will be reviewed to make sure we have that in place when we go through our audit. And the final reminder on the ARPA money is that it covers costs incurred from March eighth of last year through December thirty-first of twenty-four, and I do believe I misspoke last month, those funds must be spent by the end of two thousand and twenty-six. Any questions on anything related to the ARPA money?
Aye.
You may recall that back in December, we received a site visit from a consultant through O-Tarma, which is our insurance company, and the KLA Consulting that this lady, Kathy Gonzalez, worked for. Chief Anzig, Jeremy Holbrook, Scott Hamilton, Shawna Close, they all attended that entire meeting. I was there for a very short period of it. In mid-January, we received Ms. Gonzalez's report. She dated it December thirteenth, and I did send it to you, and you have a copy in front of you. And her report includes five recommendations to reduce potential liability exposure. She's requested that we return a completed statement of action taken form related to those five recommendations within sixty days, and if that was supposed to be sixty days from December thirteenth, we're not hitting that. That report didn't even come in until mid-January, so, in fact, I believe it arrived the day after our last board meeting. So we will just need to decide, or you will need to decide, how we're going to respond to those five recommendations.
I guess my first question, I mean, are these things we ought to do, are these things we must do, or are these things we should do? What, you guys were amazing, what are you...
I think they're all recommendations.
They're just recommendations, in my opinion.
I've completed the Road Department's portion of that, if you want to. You will need to fill one out that's basically Township-wide, but as far as the findings that applied to us, you know, we've already done the sexual harassment training, Scott and I, the hold harmless agreements, and what was the other one? There was two kind of hold harmless agreements. You know, I just said, we would implement them on any future contracts that we might have with contractors that could, or, one of them was hold harmless, and one of them was naming the Township specifically on their insurance. And we will do that in the future, where any, as far as the Road Department's concerned, on any contracts that we might have for road work. The one of them was basically keeping track of complaints. If you have a complaint, time and date of when you get the complaint, what the resolution was to the complaint, the citizen complaint, when you did it, what was done, so on and so forth. We implemented doing that, and she said something about signed inventory was the last one, which he's been doing for years, so I'm not sure why she thought she had to bring that back up, but...
Because I think it was, wasn't it more of a sign and road inspection? They want you to go around every, every month and check to see the sign?
Yeah.
Which is a question for you, and that's something that, you know, that's putting ...
To me, that was kind of semantics, because they want you to go out specifically, you know. We're going to go out Monday at eight a.m. when the sun breaks, and we're going to do an inspection of every road, every sign, and, you know, methodically go through and, you know, check to make sure everyone's fine. But we're, every week, we're almost on at least all ninety-nine percent of the roadways, so...
Really isn't necessary.
Yeah, it's kind of like you walking in your house and noticing a chair's not in the right place, you know, when you're on there doing that year after year after year, you, it's surprising how much you notice a sign's missing, or, you know, if there's a problem, but, you know, how much time do you tie up into doing that, you know, once a month? Tie up one whole day anyways, so...
And in your case, it really isn't necessary.
And then plus, we log every time, you know, if we're out, and you call it a road inspection or sign inspection, you know, we call it road inspection, as you're looking for potholes, signs, you know, tree limbs, or whatever the case may be, you know, whenever we find something that's awry, you know, get a stop sign, stop a head curve, or whatever, we log it, and then we usually call in an oops locate, which means forty-eight hours before you can put a new one up anyways, unless it's an emergency. And so all that logged in that software on the pad when we do it, so, you know.
As far as the, I'm sorry...
I think we're doing our due diligence as far as signage is concerned. That was, that was where I was headed with all that, so...
We received this after our January training had already taken place, so we were going to do the sexual harassment portion at our next training here in February, in the next two weeks.
But the rest of the stuff, we either do through CLEA...
And I didn't think...
Right, you really applied to us, except for...
Township-wide was a sexual harassment, I think.
As far as maintenance on the building, like Air Force One, do we need them to sign the hold harm, next time they come in, or, basically, do they want every contract?
I'm not so sure. Have we redid our, redone our contract for this year, do you know? I'm not sure we...
Not for this year, but...
That might be something... Because I think that's the only purely contract, well, no, there's the copier contract, but I don't know. They want everybody to sign that?
Well, that's the thing, I, I...
I mean, at Air Force One, I could see that, because if someone fell off the roof, or, you know, God forbid, something like that, but the copier machine people, or...
And, you know, and in the personnel manual, there are complaints, there contains a policy about, you know, harassment and all that, so that's, that's already been in there for years. I guess my question is, do we really need to, is, is, it sounds like, obviously, your department sort of addressed this quite well. The zoning department has one person. Do we need to address this? Is it, is it something to...
I, if you don't mind, I, I think it would, it would behoove the Township, and it would better our image with our insurance company if we say either we're doing it, or we're implementing it, because if you just say no response, then it's, it doesn't...
The optics look poor, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The perception is there that we're not doing anything, because either we don't care, or...
I guess as, as far as complaints, should that be, you know, should we have that on the, on the webpage? Anybody can make a complaint, how would that be handled? How do you, how do, you know, you guys handle complaints?
Luckily, we don't get a lot of complaints, but when we do, we have a policy that addresses how we will take the complaints. We have a pamphlet that's in the front of our, in our foyer.
If the person was to come in and no one was, like, Shawna or I wasn't here, the officer knows to get them the, get their name, information, forward it to the supervisor, provide them with the pamphlet, and some of the things that we do then is we provide them, we contact the person and say, hey, just so you know, we've received your complaint, we're looking into it, or whatever steps we need to take to bring that complaint to, or, conclusion. And if they receive a road complaint, then we, they generate a road report to us, and they put it in my box, and I usually get it within twenty-four hours, unless it's an emergency, then I, they...
Yeah, we recall them.
You know, like, if they...
If they saw a limb was low, that they thought needed addressed, they might fill out that...
A written road report, but if there was a stop sign missing, or, you know, something directly in the roadway, then I would immediately get a call, and then I would log that in our...
Were they talking about that kind of complaint, or were they talking about a complaint against one of your employees?
No, I think they were talking specifically about road-related complaints, because she indicated, remember, were you there? Can't remember. Okay, she indicated a problem where there was an example of a tree down, or something like that, and crew was called out, crew cleaned up the tree, and then another tree fell out.
Another tree fell in the same location.
Area, and somebody hit it, and then tried to have a claim against the OTA, or, yeah, against the Township.
Saying that they didn't do their job, when in fact, they had done their job.
And it just was, yeah.
So I guess, how to, do we return the form and say these are being implemented, or?
Already implemented?
It seems like certainly the Police Department or the Department have implemented it.
Yeah, and I don't know...
I don't know about the sexual harassment training. I mean, I just planned on taking our policy and going through...
That's in the personnel manual, and just going over with the officers on what's in the policy.
Right, I mean, that way, it's already...
I mean, because we do that quite a bit with all, on numerous...
With numerous other policies during the course of your use of force, you know, arrest procedures, things like that. That way...
Every year, they're getting that refresher on this, this is acceptable, this isn't acceptable. That way, they can't say it didn't occur.
They didn't know. I don't know...
Comment?
Dr. Cross, seven-four-four-four, South Diver. So, being we're in an age of Facebook and websites, then how do complaints that come in via those vehicles get handled? Oh, is it me? Okay. So, if there is a complaint, it's on the website, it depends on who they reach out to, who will get it. They can email it to the general box, they can email it directly to Jeremy, they can email it directly to literally anybody sitting here, for any department. Facebook, so it again goes to the general box for us, and then that is my responsibility to go through, and so then I just forward it to whoever needs it. If it's a road complaint, I forward it directly to Jeremy, police, directly to the chief, et cetera.
Yeah, Haley got a complaint on Sunday, February sixth, and she immediately forwarded it to me, so I was made aware of it, so...
But what if the complaint's about zoning? Well, so they can either email directly the liaison for zoning, which this year is Mr. Cross, or they talk to me.
So it, I guess, like, we could say that it, that the complaints are being addressed.
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Die somewhere.
No.
Julie, is that how you would like these to be answered, just they're all being addressed?
I, I think that's certainly the easiest way, I don't think, you know...
I mean, the, some is being implemented, some is being addressed.
Some are already implemented.
Already implemented. Some is already, already implemented. The others are being addressed.
And if they have further questions, they can get back.
You know, to your first question, Dr. Cross, is it required or recommended? It's a recommendation. What, how we answer won't impact us probably until the next time they come in and do one of these meetings, and I believe it's, I recall it's like every two or three years when this got set up. The last time, we had a cybersecurity review similar to this one, and we passed on, or you, the trustees, passed on all of the recommendations, and we didn't hear back from them at all. So I'm happy to say we're being, these are all being addressed, some are already implemented, some are in the process of being implemented, and leave it at that.
I agree.
I agree.
I think it's good that we, we only had, what, about five things?
Could have been more.
I mean, of course, there's always going to be something that someone else from the outside sees or notices, but you got to think there's some Townships out there probably get...
Ten pages worth of...
You might want to do these, so I think it's good that the Township is, is already...
You guys are doing the work, so...
What's that?
You guys are doing the work, implementing, so, for the job. Okay.
Okay, moving on. Several months ago, I think it was August and September specifically, I discussed with you the One Ohio opioid proposed settlement, and this is a statewide settlement with several of the large drug manufacturers who agreed to provide settlement funds to the state of Ohio due to the high incidence of opioid overdoses. At that time, we had a number that we thought we would receive, it's slightly changed since last summer. We now expect to receive between nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars over the next eighteen years. So in any given year, we will not have much coming in. But the process has now moved forward since last summer. I did send you an email back on February seventh with links to look at the documents. I have read through those, I'm a little confused by them, I don't know whether any of you looked at them or not, it's a good, they were good documents, if you wanted to read them just before bedtime to make sure you would fall asleep. But one of the key items in there is they have set up a system of eighteen regional governments, governments units throughout Ohio, who will be responsible for administering the funds received through this settlement. And Germantownship is in District Four, and District Four includes all of Montgomery County. Now, the Ohio Township Association recommended that each region's local governments meet and form a structure for its district. And a function of the local district, District Four in our case, is to appoint a representative to a state foundation board, which is being established, and then also to evaluate and recommend to the foundation board projects that will best use the funds to address the opioid crisis. I have reached out to a couple people to ask how and when that initial meeting will occur from Montgomery County. I will let you know when I get any information about that. To my knowledge, at this point, nothing has been set up. But at some point, the trustees will need to pass two resolutions concerning this settlement. Up until now, it's just been discussion, but some player down the line, you will, one, have to approve our participation in our District Four regional governments unit, and two, you will then have to eventually approve the units representative to the state foundation board. So when we get to that point, I'll make sure and get those resolutions. I already have drafts of them, simply just plug and play, and we'll vote those in. During January, I sent to the Montgomery County Auditor's Office the Township's two thousand and twenty-two certificate, a total amount from all sources available, and essentially, that's the working document that the auditor uses to prepare our two thousand and twenty-two official certificate of estimated resources, the document under which we're allowed to spend. We should receive that official certificate either towards the end of this month or sometime in March. Also, in January, I provided some updated elected official information to the legal women voters for their two thousand and twenty-two directory of public officials. They publish an update every year. We've had a significant number of changes since last year's to ours, so that's been sent off to them. And probably most importantly for all of us, I have now completed our two thousand and twenty-one annual financial report, and I've submitted the financial statements and footnotes to the Ohio Auditor of State. I've also arranged to have a notice put into the Germantown Press this Thursday, informing the public that they, the financial reports are available for review here at the Township. And within the next couple of weeks, those financial statements should also be available on the Auditor of State's website, and I have also authorized that the Township's two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one transactions to be placed on the Ohio checkbook website. Both of those are in the process of being done by the state, and I will definitely probably have, I will probably have that information on how to access both of those at our March meeting. The final one in my written report is, along with all of you trustees and Mrs. Sewell, I did attend the OTA conference on January twenty-six, twenty-eight. In the conference, I sat in on the public records session, and that has satisfied my requirement for this term in office. And finally, I received a request just today from Kelly Novak, the Court of Counsel at the City of Germantown. You probably all are aware that Richard Pett had passed away several weeks ago, and with that in mind, he was a member of the Fire Oversight Board, and so the city has asked that we advertise on our website, on our Facebook page, and tonight in our meeting, that if anyone is interested in serving on the Fire Oversight Board, they can contact the city, and apparently, there is a board and commission volunteer packet that they will complete. Mr. Cleveland, I think you're a member of that same oversight board?
I am.
So you may be aware of what this packet is, I do not.
I don't think they had that before, I don't remember.
They did not have it before, yeah, I, I wasn't aware of this past...
It's, it's certainly not a tough oversight committee to be on. Meetings are court, well, every three months or every four months, depending on what the schedule is. You get a read out of all the EMS calls for the entire, which is kind of interesting. No names, no names or addresses, but it, it does tell you kind of what, what calls they went on this last two months, so, yeah, if anybody's interested in...
Yeah, if anyone's interested, contact Kelly Novak at the City of Germantown office, and I'll send you something, and I'll also send Mrs. Close something to put on the website and the Facebook pages. And with that, I am done.
I think the biggest thing, I'm sorry, Glenn Cleveland, one five eight, I think the biggest thing on that committee is approving the budget. That's our biggest meeting, is the budget meeting.
All right, is that it, Mark?
I am done, thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the Police Department's report?
First of all, Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Second, COVID-nineteen coverage expired prior to a bout that went through the Police Department in January. I didn't know that since the COVID coverage had expired, if the trustees wanted to grant those officers who did not use the original COVID coverage when it was granted, during the established timeframe... when it was granted during the established timeframe. But then later tested in January after it ran out and used their sick time. Doesn't really matter to me. I just thought I'd bring it up. I would say that if you were to grant coverage, which then police department would be responsible for covering their pay like we did to the people that were out because, and during the established timeframe, I would suggest that if we, if we were to do something that sets precedent, so therefore I would say we need some kind of email from an employee in the future that states they're positive and have proof that they are positive. I don't have any reason to believe that anyone in January, which we were down three or four officers, three of them were full-time, one of them was reserve. I don't think any of them were.
Trying to mislead us or not telling the truth.
It's just something to think about.
How many days are we talking?
I looked at more like hours because we have officers, most of the officers work 12-hour shifts. The K-9 officer works eight-hour shifts. He was down three days, which was a total of 24. But most of the officers, because they worked the 12-hour shifts, one week they're on four days and off three days, the next week they're on three days and off four days. So it usually kind of coincided with their, their time off. So I don't think any of them used more than 24 hours, meaning two days, before they bumped up against their days off. And now, if you didn't know, it's, instead of 10 days, it's five days before you can return to work. So because of that five-day stretch, they usually ran into their days off. So we're only talking probably 24 hours an officer in this particular case.
And we have the money that we received from, for the COVID relief a year ago that we had already put towards the police department. So do we use that money, assuming?
Well, I mean, it would come out somewhere, but. The reason I bring it up is I don't know that it's fair that those officers, that when the pandemic first started and they, they had this, you know, COVID relief, so to speak, where if you tested positive and you were off, and those guys were off 10 days. And we, we were paying them to do it. And then now we have ones that have a clear, or slid past that timeframe that that was applicable. And then they get sick. Still tested positive. Now we're down to five days. They're, they're actually, the ones in January cost us far less money than the ones, you know, on the 10-day stretch. So I, I just try, I'm trying to be fair to everyone across the board within the police department. Ones that, you know, took it then and the ones that took it now. So that's why I brought it up.
Interesting.
Yeah, I don't have an issue.
I think we should have, we should have a confirmed positive test like you were saying.
I, I think, I don't know, I'm sure I could go to them and say, hey, can you forward me your email that said you were positive? And they'd be willing to do that if, if you wanted me to go back. But I think definitely going forward, because I don't know that, they say the numbers are down, but that doesn't mean. Really, this illness, people really don't know anything about it. It seems like every three months, we have a new set of rules. So we don't know if you, you can get it again and, and be, you know, even worse or better or. So definitely, I can ask for it.
So the Germantown Pharmacy offers COVID tests for $30, I believe. Because I know that there's been like issues with employees that need to get a test, so they want to go to CVS where it's free. But they can't get it for three, four days, and what good does that do?
So what, what do you need us to do?
Well, I don't know if we need to do any of that. We'll definitely at least say, yeah, it's okay with me if you don't charge them their sick time. You know, I don't want to do anything that's going to make you guys mad.
So do you want to motion to do that?
If you are going to implement a policy that if an township employee gets COVID, they don't have to use sick time. I think that needs to be a resolution because we're talking a financial change to how we pay our employees.
And we can put it off the next month. I just wanted to bring it up.
And then you'll have to worry about whether you backdate it. Some of these occurred in 2021, I believe, didn't they?
You're basically just giving them their sick time back, right? Because they've already.
Yeah, the ones in January, the ones before already got their time. Or, or.
It expired. When did it expire? I think in June of '21.
The requirement.
Well, and the only officer, one officer was sick early, like March, around March, and had come into contact with someone that may have had COVID. So then, he got his 10 days off. So then when he actually got COVID later in the year, which I think was September or October, I told him, you don't get anymore. The government said you get 10 days and you used it then. So that doesn't matter on that particular employee. But then when we get to January, we have a bunch of other employees that have never used anything prior to.
It's all related to this?
So, yeah, it's related to 2022.
And they've already used their sick time?
Yeah, for now, yes.
So we're, all we're doing is giving them back their sick time.
Reimbursement, sick time that they used. Most of the, most of the officers, if not all, they used it in January, were maxed out on sick time to begin with. So it's not like they're problematic employees that use a lot of sick time.
I still would want a resolution because this changes our sick time policy.
But you're not paying anything out?
We will not pay cash out until such time as they use that sick time that we reimburse them for.
That is correct.
And sometimes they get to the point where they reach a max sick time anyway, and they can't accrue anymore. Some of our employees are in that situation.
Yeah, so what's the resolution number?
It'd be 13.
I will introduce, introduce Resolution 2022-13, a resolution to continue the COVID sick pay for the year 2022. Is that all it needs to be?
I think that should be acceptable. What I'll do is probably reach out to the prosecutor and with the language, make sure that they feel comfortable since we are talking salary-related issue. But that's a good place to start.
Right. And then backdate it to January 1st of 2022.
Okay. Is there a second to Resolution 2022-13?
Second.
Any discussion of the resolution?
I know at my, I had, I didn't get COVID in the first go-around. But when I did get COVID in October, I, I had to use my own sick days. Had I got it a year before, I could have got 10 days off. I had to take my own. So I think it's a nice gesture to our police officers who came in during the entire pandemic, never complained, and kept on going. So I think it's a good gesture to them and show our support for them.
Here we go. Further discussion. I recall the role, Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-13 is adopted.
Thank you very much. And the other item I have, I have two, two more items. Surplus vehicles, or the vehicles we declared a surplus that we sold on COV deals. The 2014 cruiser sold for $4,054. The 2016 cruiser sold for $9,600. So a total of $13,654. Essentially, that was in part because we left all the equipment on them and only sold them to police departments. Ones up near Cleveland, ones from Texas that bought the cruisers. Typically, for the 2014, I'd guess in the past, we probably would have gotten anywhere from $700 to $1,200, depending on the market. And the 2016, we probably would have got maybe $1,200 to $2,000. So by leaving that stuff in there, we definitely, we couldn't use it because of the, we had to get new equipment because of the widths and the lengths of cars. So it actually paid, or paid out to our advantage. And the last is, oh, go ahead.
Is there something we have to do to have them release the funds? That's automatic?
Took care of it.
Okay, because I knew in one time we had that issue. I've not seen the funds yet.
Okay.
Although it is direct deposit, if I recall. Is that right? I'll, I'll get on the bank website and check it out. Thank you.
And last is a agreement with the EMA, jurisdictional agreement with Emergency Management Authority that was, was brought to, Dr., are you going to cover that?
I will cover that.
Okay, then I don't need to have anything else?
Someone, did someone online have a question?
One of our online observers is Montgomery County Township Association President George Ann Godse. And George Ann has, in the chat, talked about the opioid settlement and how that structure is going to be, going to work. Did you read her chat?
If she wants to talk?
Or George Ann, yeah.
If she would like to.
Surely, surely I can do that.
There you go.
I was contacted by Judy Dodge, our county commissioner. And from what, what we can understand of this settlement is that there's 19 regions in the state of Ohio. Fortunately, Montgomery County is its own region. Other, other sections have had to have four or five counties that are in their region. And, and so they have to come together, elect, elect or appoint one person that is going to represent them. They're going through the, through the township associations. They're saying we want one person to represent the townships to come to the county meeting. And at that point, then they will, from the cities, the townships, the villages, they will appoint a person to go to the state and be on a committee that will review any grants that are submitted for the use of the opioid funds. It's, everything is, is very unclear at this point. They haven't set their first meeting. So we'll just give you information as we receive it.
George Ann, could you just state your name and your address for the record?
Certainly. It's George Ann Godse, 407 Burgess Avenue, Dayton, Ohio.
Hey, thank you very much.
Coming in the street.
B U R G E S S.
B U R G E S S.
Burgess.
Okay.
Yes.
George Ann, thank you so much. I know that you sent me an email about that, and John Morris did too. So I'm glad to know that you have figured out how this is going to work, and you'll just keep us informed.
Right. I think the, the important thing is if you have some thoughts about how this money should be used, that you share it with us. Otherwise, it appears that they're going to funnel it through the Adamus Group here in Dayton and something called COATS, C O A T S, is going to be over it. But I guess I'll present that at the meeting that they have.
COATS stands for Community, Community Opioid Action Team.
Right.
I'm on the law enforcement board for that.
Okay, so maybe you can share a little, if they know any more about it than we do.
I haven't been to. There hasn't been a meeting since this came out, but yes, if I hear anything, I definitely will share it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So just to add on to Chief's report, I received an email from Jeff Jordan, Director of Montgomery County Office of Emergency Management, that stated that we need to approve the new emergency management jurisdictional agreement. So I'll go ahead and introduce Resolution 2022-14, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Montgomery County, Ohio for the provision of emergency preparedness, homeland security, and emergency management services for Germantownship, Montgomery County. Whereas the Germantownship Board of Trustees desires to enter into an agreement with the Montgomery County Office of Emergency Management to provide mitigation, preparation, response, and recovery support for emergencies, disasters, enemy attack, or any other action too great to be dealt with with unassisted as outlined in the Montgomery County Jurisdictional Emergency Management Service Agreement. And whereas an annual cost for these services will be determined by a representative executive committee and approved by the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, and whereas this agreement stands for a term not to exceed three years in accordance with the Montgomery County Jurisdictional Emergency Management Services Agreement. Now therefore, it now resolved by Germantownship, Montgomery County, in an agreement with Montgomery County, Ohio, to provide mitigation, preparation, response, and recovery support for emergencies, disasters, enemy attack, or any other action too great to be dealt with unassisted. Germantownship, Montgomery County be, and it's hereby authorized. I have a copy of this for you, Mark.
Possibly having it in a digital format?
I do.
Yeah.
If you send that to me, please. Thank you.
And I'll second.
I'm not sure what that fee is going to be, obviously.
I believe we pay a fee every year, and it's based on population. And I'm thinking it's somewhere in the range of $600. It's of course be going up now that we have the new census, but not by much. And it's a per-person amount, just a small, small. Okay, any discussion of Resolution 2022-14?
Thanks to you for getting me, getting me going on that this morning.
Hearing that, I will call the role, Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-14 is adopted.
Okay, could we have the road department report? Thanks again, Jeremy, for all your work over the weekend. We all appreciate it.
That's fine. Just a couple, a couple things to report on tonight. As you're all aware, we've been busy plowing and salting roads over the last three weeks, I think. One with the big ice and snowstorm we had a couple of weeks ago. Everything seemed to work out as well as it could. We are running a little low on salt. We're supposed to be getting two loads in tomorrow. Contacted the depot today, and they promised me two loads tomorrow at the three we have on order. So that'll give us about 75 tons if they bring in all three. That'd be about 50 tons if they bring in two. Obviously, that and cleaning the trucks and, and clearing the lot and the sidewalks, it's pretty busy. So we did finish up installing the water softening system on the township building. I know I reported a little bit of that on the last meeting. So that's been up and running for about two or three weeks now. So hopefully, we'll start seeing a difference in our hardness of our water and the staining in the urinals and toilets, so. Other than that, there was one thing I didn't list on my report. The chief of police noticed some leaking above his office, which is the frontmost portion of the flat roof. It's not the tall portion, not the middle or this side, but there's a little area above the chief of police's office and Miss Close's. Had to shovel all the snow off of that and the ice. He was getting some pretty substantial leaking. So I, it would be my recommendation that we look into replacing at least that section of roof this year. It has been repaired in the past, but it's the drainage area, it's just.
Well, that's the second time, right?
Yeah.
At least I know of.
Yeah, it's the second time I've shoveled it off.
Was it last year this time?
Yes.
Is, is that the only time it does, when the snow backs up?
Literally, this time when I noticed it, I was in a meeting.
Yeah, we were, yeah.
We were, we were just talking, and all of a sudden, it just started a scream.
It just came down, so.
Other than that, I think you're going to bring up the executive session.
Yeah, we'll have the executive session during new business.
That's all I have.
Okay, could we have the sunny department report?
Yes, full business. Last month, you guys, I don't remember who exactly requested the trustee contact information. Just be listed on the website, just on that button. So now on the contact info tab, you should be able to get the trustees and Mr. D. S. Ed's email. Just copy and paste however you'd like. Over the last month, I've only written one permit for a full barn on Puddin Bag, which should be starting very soon. Upcoming board meeting next month, March 8th, will be the VDA's case for the school. I am waiting for some updated information from trustee Cross, and we're getting that going. I also wanted to ask. I also wanted to ask if we have, if I can get, if we can make the job description for both my zoning position and the admin assistant? Because in 2019 I was hired, I never got one.
Should be in the personnel manual.
Okay. Yes, that would be great. And then one thing I did not have on there, which I just remembered. Do we have a, I don't want to say process, but like a schedule on when we buy new flags? No, just whenever it's needed.
This one's out. We've.
The police department buys it.
Yeah, we just replaced one.
Several months ago.
Five months. We've already got a small rip and several rips now.
Yeah.
There's one upstairs. I'll hop up.
We have a, we have a spare.
So I, at this portion of me, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jim Martin, thanks for being here, to the position of the alternate member of the German Township Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
Jim knows everybody but me. That's my joke. Knows Jake, knows Lou. And certainly highly recommended Jim, so.
Just catching up.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve Jim Martin as the BTA alternate member. Any discussion of the motion?
Zoning Commission.
Zoning Commission.
Oh, zoning commission, I'm sorry.
I'll just say Jim, I got to know Jim in the last year. He's a great guy. He'll be a great person to have on our zoning board, really cares about the township and focused on what we, what we care about. So I'm excited to have Jim as a member of our zoning commission.
Giving you high expectations.
I am.
You really have to work.
I'm here. I work with him. He's on the fair board with me last several years. Of course, that's all volunteer, so spend the week together, fair. Lots of projects together. He's a good help. Cared about the community. Family man.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. We can move on to trustee reports. Mr. Potter?
All right, my, my report, I had a, on the park board and it was canceled due to weather. I spent a day with the Road Department, went riding with them for their first snow day, got to know them guys. Of course, I'd already known them, got to know them about. And I spent a couple hours with the chief one day and made myself available to Jeremy during the last snowstorm if he needed anything or relief on driving that I was available. I went up to the, to the OTA meeting. I was only there on Friday. The public records session was already sold out or full, so I could not get that in. I only was there for one day because of my work schedule.
They do have online versions of that if you want, so easy to do it that way too.
Okay, I'll get with you about that. Second of all, I, there was a man contacted me. His name is Nate. Blue Sky Network is his company. Nate Morlock, he is an internet person that is distributing internet through Jackson Township right now. It is a line of sight type internet. So he's putting up like small satellite towers, one on Brubaker Green and Larry Restanios on Purple Canyon Line, Randy Elias for the internet in Jackson Township. So he contacted me about possibly putting a internet receiver on our tower here. So I contacted Mark and he sent me the agreement about our tower I sent. And in there, it does talk about possibly being co-rented space on a tower. So I talked to, Nate was supposed to be here today, but he was sick, so I talked to him this afternoon on the phone. I gave him this information here. He said that he would talk to us some more. But it was, he would get with them and make sure that the frequencies was all compatible, nothing like that. So, and if that happens, the way that he does if he was to put a tower here, of course, it would be giving internet to the township and we would get our internet for free. Is how that, how they don't, they don't really pay for it, pay to put it on. Now, it could be possible, if it is, has fiber optic comes to here and it could make this like a hub, and that would be a different story. That could be something that we could possibly get paid for at that point. Right now, it's coming from Miami's where he has a hub in Miami's. But what's coming to Jackson Township and Farmersville, just line of sight receivers. So he would go to different farms throughout the area and put the satellite receivers up. So looking into that, I think that'd be all.
I think a big question for him, he really needs to be here for that, so hopefully next meeting he can.
Yes, yes, he will.
You know, is this something that's going to have to be upgraded every couple of years? Actually, how much of the township is going to be covered?
Well, it's as much as wherever you hit the towers.
Right, yeah.
So it's all line of sight.
Those would be questions for him.
All kinds of questions.
That's clear. Land clue. Is that 3G or 5G?
I have no idea.
There's some, there's some big concerns about 5G.
I have no idea.
Countries have even outlawed it, so.
Yep.
We don't have any airplanes close by.
Correct.
It's not just that serious. Medical issues with that, that way. But yeah, hopefully he can get here next, next month and actually answer questions.
Just wanted to let you know that we're working into that.
Anything else?
Stubb? I'll be pretty brief tonight. We have a full meeting on Wednesday.
Who's coming in?
Blue Sky.
That's okay. Cemetery, on January 27th, we had an accident at the cemetery where Mr. Steiner was working at the top right-hand side, the farthest towards, away from here, towards the city of Germantown. And it was one of those cold, real cold mornings. While he was working, his sleeve caught the reverse lever and he went down the hill backwards. And there was some damage to about ten headstones. I have a picture for you guys to see what happened. But he's okay. We're working with the, Bob Rohrbach's working to find all the, contact all the families and he's got most of them so far to let them know what happened and that we've already contacted our insurance company. And it's going to be taken care of. Most importantly, Mark's okay. And he thinks if he would have went a little bit further, the picture doesn't do it justice, but he was on a pretty steep hill. We're just lucky he's okay. So just wanted to report on that. Other than that, the cemetery is going well. I also attended the OTA and took care of our, my requirement for the, did I give you the certificate yet? No. No, did we get a certificate this time?
We get it online because you picked it up.
That's right. Okay.
You get it online, once you.
Okay.
Once you.
Go into the portal.
Okay.
And record that you were there and you, you can get a certificate.
Okay. Yeah, they gave us one there too. I forgot.
Well, that's right. They did give us a hard time. You're right. But you still have to go in and report it, self-report.
Really?
On the Fiscal Integrity Act portal.
I'm not sure. I don't think we have to do that.
Maybe not. Maybe that's only.
You might have to because of your continuing education now.
You're probably right. I was just, was the fiscal.
Okay, so I wanted to let, make it known that I had finished that. Went to several classes, helpful, gained knowledge. I want to point out, I went to one that was talking about ways to prevent annexation in the township. And a jet is one of them. And in the discussion, it was brought up that typically, or it can be in the case, when a jet is created, it's written in the agreement that there is no, while this jet is in place, there's no annexation in the rest of the township. And it's unfortunate to learn that now, not before, but that's something that definitely should have been in there and included, in my opinion. And it also mentions that utilities and like, for example, in the case of the Village of Farmersville and extending water and sewer out there, if there was any upgrade needed to that, that should have been written in that the jet was paying for that. Or it could have been written in that the jet was paying for that, and that's not the case with this. So I think it came a little late, but it was definitely a worthwhile class and definitely something to consider if we get to renegotiate this at some point. I'd also like to thank Jeremy and the road crew. Got what, thirty-six miles some of road? Is that right?
Thirty-seven point.
Thirty-seven point.
They changed it off.
Yeah, they got you, yeah. You got two guys and Lou. That's impressive that they're able to get around and keep our roads clear and I appreciate everything they do. I know people like to get a little chirpy online, but you know what? We've got, we've got, yeah. We've, they do a great job and they should be commended for what they do, especially if there's a lot of ice, it's still slick out there. So you guys did a great job. Appreciate it very much. And Joe in the police department has always do a fantastic job. So just like to thank them as, as well. Lastly, I think at some point I'd like to look into doing a joint meeting with Jackson Township just to discuss some similar issues I think we have. So just keep that in mind as well and I can reach out to trustee Moyer if that's something you guys are interested in doing. So I'll reach out to him and see if we can come up with a plan. And other than that, that concludes my report.
I got a question, Jake.
Sure.
The lean to.
Oh, they're almost done. Everything's done except for the, the concrete, so.
All come together good.
It looks good. Yep. Sorry, I forgot to mention that with the other stuff going on. But yeah, no, I walked through it tonight. They did a good job, so. They're waiting to do a little bit of the trim around the door until the concrete's done. But other than that, we're waiting on the concrete. And then actually I'll go back to you on the, on the tower. I had tried a year or so ago and I think you probably saw the email with the attorney, but there was some issues when I was, because I had another company.
Right, I remember that. That's why you sent this to me.
Yep.
And.
Just wanted to make you aware.
Right.
We'll have to see what his thoughts was.
Yep.
All right, thanks Jake. I've got several things. I'll just go through them. I met with Judy Gililand and Senior Center Coordinator, Shinoa Arismen on 1/20/22. The Germantown area senior citizens dissolved on 6/11/2021. There was another group that was kind of taking over the senior center. This is simplified managing of the senior center as previously the GASC was collecting its own membership fees and attempted to provide its own, to provide its own oversight to the senior center. Now the senior center is collecting its own dues, the 220 members in 2021, 138 members in 2022 as of this meeting. These are $10 for township residents, $20, $5 for out of township residents, and there are no extra fees. Still, the big problem is a lack of volunteers. They used to have about forty, now they're close to zero and they still can't find a bus driver. Shinoa is the only full-time employee. She has a part-time assistant and she does almost all the prep and shopping for all the events at the senior center. She also stated the sponsors for the senior center for cash, food, et cetera, have basically gone to zero due to the COVID pandemic. Before the COVID, had about seventy rental events during the year and now they have none, so that's the problem. Again, they've got really nothing going on. Hopefully that's going to get better. One success has been the Monday Meal Program through Senior Resource Center in Dayton, based with the Meals on Wheels. Frozen meals are delivered to the senior center, then they are picked up by their residents each Monday. Fifty-seven meals were ordered on 1/24/22 as an example. About fourteen to seventeen are delivered by Frida and Gerald Emrick. We did discuss the 2022 budget, which had already been approved. Senior Oversight City that consists of myself, Bonnie Kugel, Judy Gililand, and Shinoa Arismen will meet in April. Senior Center has, really has plenty of activities planned every week and you can call Shinoa at 937-853-8900 for details. Or if you go to the Germantown webpage and you can access the monthly schedule. It really has a lot of things on there. So just to broadband for the township update, I'll extend, give you a copy of those emails. In January, I reached out to Lonnie Peterson from TSC Hanson Communications and Montgomery County Commissioner Judy Dodge. I also spoke with Kelly Gears, Director of Strategic Initiatives, Montgomery County. Let me just read those emails quickly, versus trying to describe them. This one was to Lonnie Peterson. All right, this is Mark Cross and I'm a trustee for Germantown Township, Montgomery County. Many of our Germantown Township residents experience ongoing problems with reliable internet access. Does your company have any plans to upgrade service to your existing customers in the entire Germantown Township area? Has there been any discussions with Montgomery County Commissioners to utilize American Rescue Fund Act, Act Funds and Infrastructure Investment and Job Act Funds to increase broadband access to our residents? So he got back to me, thanks for your message. We are expecting to get control of the Germantown Telephone Exchange on February 1st. We have, we have not had any discussion with Montgomery County at this point. We have an ambitious plan for the Germantown Exchange area and we will begin this spring to deploy a fiber optic. I am assuming the Germantown Township is inside the exchange area of the Fortman Germantown Township or Germantown Independent Telephone Company. So that's kind of a big promise. We'll see how that goes, but just like Jeremy had heard. So I wrote to Commissioner Dodge, my name is Mark Cross and I'm a Germantown Township trustee in Montgomery County. I read your letter to the editor in the Dayton Daily News on 9/7/2021 concerning the impact the federal infrastructure plan will have on the Dayton region. I was especially interested in your statement about using more than 100 million allowed to Ohio to expand broadband services to the underserved western portions of the county. I was also interested to see that Montgomery County plans the earmark two million of the 103 million received from American Rescue Act Funds for broadband expansion to the rural area of the county. And is your office formulating any plans to bring reliable as well as affordable broadband across rural Montgomery County and specifically Germantown Township using these funds? Are there any plans to partner with local internet providers, as is being formulated by Cincinnati Bell and Green County to reach that goal? So she got back, or one of her assistants got back, thank you for your email. I reached out to Kelly Gears, Montgomery County's Director of Strategic Initiatives for an update on the Digital Equity Project. She said they are still finalizing the request for proposals for a contractor to coordinate the project and that Germantown and Germantown Township are definitely included as priority areas. She also said she'll reach out to you soon for input. So she, she also stated, I recently moved to Dershowitz Township to a property on Farmersville, West Carrollton Road and we are now very familiar with the issue of securing quality and reliable internet service. So, so a lot of promises, not whether they will actually go through with that, but yeah, so, but it was kind of interesting. And then I did get a, resident was unhappy with his consolidated communications DSL internet service. He recently upgraded from four megabits per second to fifteen megabits per second. It increased free fees, so that's still very, very slow, so. Go back for it. So zoning update, I met with Kurt Tacobi, President of the Germantown Township Zoning Commission on 2/9/22 to discuss goals for the zoning commission in 2022. BZA case again, as Haley said, is 2020, 2022-60CUV has been rescheduled from 2/8/22 to 3/8/22 due to concerns over the COVID transmission. Meeting location has been changed from the township meeting room of the Germantown Methodist Church to allow for larger crowd. So I had, I got an update on indigent resident cremation services. I received information regarding indigent resident cremation services from Kerry Carter, Funeral Director at ARP Root and Carter Funeral Home. First, the burial or cremation of a body at expense of the township or municipal corporation is governed by ORC 9.15. It states that the person was a legal resident of the county, the proper officers of the township in which the person's body was found shall cause it to be buried or cremated at the expense of the township in which the person had a legal residence at the time of death. So if they die anywhere in Montgomery County, but their legal residence is here, we have to take on the cost of cremating them. I talked to Bob Rohrbach. This has only happened a couple of times in the last twenty years, so it's not like it's a very, very, occurs very often. And also the ORC further states that such officials shall provide at the grace, at the grave of a person or if the person's cremated, remains or buried at the grave of the person's remains, a metal, stone, or concrete marker in which the person's name and age, if known, and date of death shall be inscribed. So we are legally required to provide those services. She also provided a link to the State of Ohio Board of Unbombers and Funeral Directors that sponsors an indigent burial and cremation support program. And once the local government entity is registered, it may, if funds are available, receive reimbursement for expenses by the state. The state only allocates a million dollars per year for the entire state, so I don't know, you know, if you have someone dying to the end of the year, you may not have any money. But that's just a matter of signing up for that. I think you can do that. Basically, Mrs. Carter recommends that if the trustees want to come up with a policy for indigent cremations, you specify a dollar amount you are willing to pay and then present it to the funeral homes you are willing to pay it to, or to work with. I kind of recommend the Germantown Township appropriates up to a hundred, a thousand dollars per cremation. per cremation, burial and marker to be interred at the Germantown Union Cemetery. I also recommend that the trustees work with the two local funeral homes, ARP, Root and Carter Funeral Home and Dalton Funeral Home to provide these services. So basically, she gave me some, uh, as far as the, and this is a question for you, as far as the cemetery, Bob said it's three hundred and fifty dollars to basically bury somebody, even if it's cremains, just to drill a hole and.
Actually, I've got that here someplace.
And they would, they would bury them up at Potter's Field. And I'm not sure where exactly that is.
To the left.
Back quarter. So, um, she, she gave me some figures of what ARP and Root charged and she didn't want me to disclose those. But I think that even with the, the marker and the cremation and the cemetery costs, we should be under a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I would be.
Okay.
Yes.
So basically, if you, if you guys want to go ahead with this, I would maybe make a resolution, um, like to introduce Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen.
Yes.
The resolution that states whereas Germantown Township trustees recognize the inherent dignity of all its residents, and Germantown Township is responsible for ORC nine point one five for the burial or cremation and placement of a grave marker, Germantown Township shall appropriate up to one thousand dollars to provide those services through a local Germantown Funeral Home to provide such services to a legal resident of Germantown Township.
I guess, I just have one point one thing.
Hold on, let me second it first and then we can have the discussion. A second.
Now we can discuss this.
Um, Germantown Funeral Homes, I support the company, the, our companies here. But they, they will probably have Trinity in Carlisle do the cremation. That's where the cremation is. And that is a person that I know, Trinity. And we can just go straight to the source, which would save us money.
Because, uh, I think that's, uh, true. Thank you. Anything else?
So do we just set this money aside or at some point, if this ever happens, we, we will spend it? There's no account being created?
I would rather not set up a fund for a burial that happened two or three times every twenty years.
Right.
As Mr. Roebach said. General fund has a thousand. At any point in time, it could be used for this. And it is only for indigent people that have no other way.
Right.
Pay for a cremation. I didn't even realize we were obligated to do the burial. I thought that almost we did the cremation. That was all that was necessary.
No, we were.
Carrie told you differently.
And the mark, I got it off of the ORC. So that, that's all in there. Yeah. Can you, um, give me a copy of the language for this? So I don't have to listen to the recording.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to get the wording that you've used.
Okay. Any further discussion of the, um, Resolution twenty twenty-two fifteen? During that, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen is adopted.
Thanks.
I attend the Germantown Council meeting on two seven twenty-two. The council position created by the election, Terry Johnson, as mayor, is still open. Council was going into executive session after their regular meeting to interview trial candidates. Mr. Reddick stated that the Pla- Planning Commission had voted down five to zero requests from the Bear Creek Farms on Dayton Germantown Pike to increase the number of lots from forty-two to eighty-two. There will be a public hearing on the issue on three seven twenty-two. I think that's a Steve Ross property as you're going out of town, off to the left. That is correct. Yeah. So I, I don't, I don't see how he's going to put forty-two lots up there, let alone eighty-two, but the Planning Commission turned that down. So, um, you'll like this. Mr. Woffson reminded council that the vote to approve the jet in, the jet in, in May, he reminded the council of that vote coming up. He stated several residents had already reached out to him to help with the campaign. Uh, I, we talked about putting, uh, some, some, a message on the trash bills to maybe please provide email to be placed on the email list. I'll talk to Sean and see if that can be done. That is all I have. Any questions? Do we have any old business? Not that I'm aware of. Uh, new business. Uh, I would like to get, I would, I moved to go into executive session for ORC one two one point two two G one to consider the employment of a public employee. Mr. Heasted, may I have a roll call vote? We're using the employment category. Yeah. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Okay, it is now eight fifteen. We will move into executive session. Uh, you don't have to stick around if you want to. That's fine. But I think for being here, if you are, are pleased. So I want to invite Mr. Heasted, the trustees, and Mr. Holbert back to executive session. You need me to wait? I do not.
Do you have a comment?
No.
We have a visitor comment before you guys enter executive session?
Since we've already moved into.
But if you want to enclose executive session and reopen it.
Yeah, let me, uh, it is now eight sixteen. All in favor of closing? Oh, make a motion. I don't really need a motion. Make a motion. Board will now move in, uh, it's, the board will, uh, be back on the record. It's really all.
We need a motion.
Okay, let's make a motion to, um, come out of executive session.
Sorry, guys.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're back in regular session. Okay, who's ever on?
This gentleman here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, sir.
As soon as I turned around to pause the recording, he had his hand up. So.
My bad. Yeah, I apologize for coming a little late today.
Could you, uh, name and address, please?
My name is Jeff, Jeffrey Don Dero, spelled D O N D E R O. My address is six seven nine three Diamond Mill Road, Germantown. And I just want to bring forth the concern. I have talked with a couple of you, talked with Jake, I talked with you, Mark, and, uh, and I think I talked about, uh, just concern about the, uh, property sixty-five ninety on Diamond Mill, um, who filed a zoning, so this is some big thing, pay attention, uh, permit to build, a storage building, uh, for farm equipment. And the actual activity going on there is, is in the relocation of the Germantown Oil Company, which kind of is in, uh, well, like I say, they came under a false flag. Now they're bringing trucks up and we originally heard they were just going to be empty trucks, but now we're hearing they're not. They're going to fill them up, put them up there, park them, and they'll pull out in the morning and do deliveries. Uh, these are big tank trucks. The capacity, uh, we're guessing is between fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred gallons of either oil or diesel fuel. It's a very dangerous driveway they're going into. I think Chief is aware of the issue up there. Being it was supposed to be farm equipment, farm equipment moves what? In the fall and in the spring. Not a lot of activity on farm equipment coming in and out. This is a daily event. It's going to be in the morning and in the evening. And these are going to be big oil trucks coming up. Uh, they have what I believe to be hazer content, uh, and they don't have a containment up there at all, which is our number one biggest concern. Most of us run wells up there. Water is a premium. Our aquifer needs to be protected. And so, uh, there was no hazmat study. There was no environmental impact study because it was just going to be farm equipment storage. We believe that the, the traffic risk of accidents up there is major. Uh, because when you're at that drive where they located, there's a brief dip in the road coming up from Germantown. And for a split second, you can't see a car. And they're doing fifty-five, I think the speed limit is fifty, but they're doing far better than that. And I think that if they get a, a truck entering or exiting the property, that's going to be a serious accident. I, so that was a big concern. Now, they also have personal vehicles. It's just not, just the trucks coming in and out. And they come in slow. That's the biggest problem is they come in slow. And they almost had a problem here about two weeks ago, um, with my neighbor coming up the hill. Truck driver said, uh, yeah, I didn't see you until it was too late. All right. And he pulled in front of him. So, you know, somebody hitting the full tank of diesel fuel or, or, uh, oil, that could be a problem. So there's more traffic than I think they submitted on their form to Montgomery County in order to get permission to put a drive there. I talked to Montgomery County and they said, well, we can't deny a guy use some land. I, I understand that. But same time, again, it was going to be farm equipment. Most of the farmers I know, when they're moving their big equipment, you know, they've got somebody there making sure there's no danger. All right. They got somebody warning people that, uh, the tractor or whatever is coming out. Um, like I said, the original plan was trucks only. Now we're hearing that they're going to come and file for a zoning change. So they slid in under the radar. Now they got their business there and they want a zone change, okay, to allow them to run their business out of there. To me, that's really totally backwards. And that's not the way we, we should be running our business. Uh, water source is limited in our area. Like I say, we know that when they have heavy rains, from the top of that hill down, water runs down the right, or excuse me, the left side if we're heading into Germantown, runs right downhill in a stream. It'll run past my property. It'll run past a couple neighbors. And then it spills across the road down into that gully. And that gully leads to Little Twin. So if there's ever a major problem up there, it's not going to be just our area that's going to be impacted. I think, I think that's all the concerns that I, that I have. And I, I think we should be looking at, and I, I know the guy wants, he wanted to move where he was at, but that wasn't the right location.
And we had talked, um, I think if you can maybe make a formal complaint through the zoning department, you can download the form from the website and then send it in.
Right.
That'd be good. Basically, when he got his ag exemption, he said he was going to use that, that barn for equipment and supplies.
Yeah.
Of agricultural use. So, you know, to me, he's really not doing that. I'm actually going to talk to the attorney, uh, come Thursday and I'll bring this up. I think he's, he's violating his exemption for one thing. And certainly, I don't consider that farm related to what he's.
No, and he is building a dispatch office there inside the building.
I, I promised to look into it, but like you say, maybe kind of get, get a complaint form in writing so we have that on the record.
We can do that. And I've got a number of neighbors that are concerned.
Yeah.
It could have flooded your room, but they sent me.
And they usually have them do the same thing, you know, uh, a lot, you know, download the form, fill it out.
Okay. So appreciate you hearing, uh, listening to me.
I appreciate you coming.
We're, we're worried these, now the building's up, back behind the building, can't see what's going on. We're worried about him burying a tank back there. You know, and having his little terminal, uh, transfer station right there instead of down next to Marathon. So thank you for listening.
No, no.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming in.
And I'm sorry I delayed your.
No, you're good. You're good.
He's always fixed, yeah. So again, uh, are we ready?
I'm ready.
I moved to go into executive session for ORC one two one point two two G one to consider the employment of a public employee.
Second.
Mr. Heasted, Heasted, may I have a roll call vote?
My groundhog guy has a, that was last week.
Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
So now, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So it's now eight twenty. We'll move into executive session. I'd like to, to invite the trustees, uh, fiscal officer, Mr. Heasted, and both superintendent.
How much time do you use?
Eight twenty. Oh, eight twenty-five. I'm sorry.
I have eight twenty-five.
Okay, eight twenty-five. Anyway, if, if you leave, thanks for coming. Appreciate you guys for hanging in there. Nice meeting you, Jerry.
Good to see you.
You need me to wait around?
You're ready.
It is now eight forty-five. We're back on the record. That's really all we need. That's really, we don't need to make a motion. We have a motion to. No, you don't actually need one. Yes, we. I can make a motion. Okay, I'll, but you, but you really don't. You just say we're back on the record. Yeah. Not how I read it, but. Let's, let's. I'd like to make a motion to move back into, uh, our open meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that is at eight forty-five. So, uh, any other new business? It's not, and we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned again at eight forty-five. Back and forth.